Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Satrum Board of Education, June 15th, 2022. If everyone can please and join us in the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Today, we lost a member of our Satrum family, a school communication aide, Patricia McMackin. Please join me in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Pelletary for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with, as we often do, I have the pleasure to do, recognizing some of our incredible students. And I'm going to start with some student athletes from across our schools and some Special Olympic athletes that represented our district so well recently. I'm going to go through a list of names, going to ask each of them to come up, we're going to talk a little bit, take a picture, talk about some experiences. So as I call you up, I'm going to ask that you kind of come up and fill up the front here if their teachers or staff are here as well to support them, they can come up in front as well. So our Special Olympic athletes, Matthew Kalpakis. Matthew's got his gold medal, his medal on him, right? Outstanding. Oh, I see two medals there, Justin, nice. Soliana Juarez, not here, okay. I think Soliana's out training, so she's not here right now. Okay. Thank you so much. Keegan, Keegan, were you in one of those running races? I could tell. Nice job, Keegan. How are you, Shane?
Good.
Good to see you. Two medals, too. Wow. Very impressive, Shane. Maximus Marone. I know what Connor got a medal for, I could tell. Be careful, Connor. Kyle's training, okay. Nicole Pross, I don't believe is here either, Nicole? Brianna Schofield, I don't think Brianna's here either, right? She's absent. How about Ruben Presnal? I'm going to ask the teachers that support our youngsters to come up in front as well, please. So proud of our kids, our programs, this is East and North, I believe, right? And Sammaset, that's right, my goodness. Is there someone, like a spokesperson for the group here? You are? Do you want to go up? Thank you so much. We will definitely have time for pictures, don't worry, we will definitely do pictures. So, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Megan Amy, and I'm the Sammaset Special Olympics coach, and I'm here tonight alongside some fellow Special Olympics coaches, Emily Frasina, Andrea Biblo, Gwen David, and Michelle Sharlip from North, and Trisha Vallee, and Michael Wittenberg from East. We have had the honor this year to coach the Special Olympics teams at our respective schools. The athletes, general education peers, volunteers, and support staff who worked together this year are some of the most dedicated and hardworking students and staff members that we know. We also had the support of some of our fabulous PE staff members who would practice skills during class that would carry over to the competition. Sammaset Middle School, Satrum East, and Satrum North Special Olympics clubs trained hard to finally participate in a Special Olympics regional competition again, the first one being held since 2019. Five Sammaset athletes, one Satrum East athlete, and 10 Satrum North athletes took the field on Saturday, May 21st, at Weldon E. Howitt Middle School. The day began with a parade of athletes and opening ceremonies. The athletes then competed in one or more of the following events: 50-meter dash, softball throw, standing jump, running long jump, and assisted walk. All athletes took home medals in their divisions. We are so proud of them all for inspiring everyone around them. Way to go.
So I just want to add, we do have certificates for each of the youngsters, we're going to give these out as well. We're going to ask our board to come around and take some pictures, and some community members as well. Just before everyone moves, I just want to say, I've had a difficult 24 hours for various reasons, and we'll get into that. Seeing our youngsters here, and what they mean to each other, and how they support each other, and how we support them has lifted my spirits, and I hope that's done the same for everyone in this community. Thank you so much. We have another amazing, you know, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I'll tell you what, if I didn't have another amazing group right now to honor, I'd say let's go home now, right? Bye. Bye, guys. Let's put them on the agenda each month, right? My goodness. Okay. Our next group of students that we are going to honor today, it's another group of outstanding youngsters and outstanding team at Linwood that leads them. And these are our Destination Imagination students. I'm going to call them up, they're going to get a certificate as well, and then we're going to have a little Q and A, if you don't mind. So, our Destination Imagination students, Christina Calley. Wow, medals, too. Come here, Christina, take this one. Great job. Congratulations. You know, don't sit, you've got to stand right over here. This is going to be fun. Congratulations, Sofia. Jack Mitchell. I went to school with a guy named Jack Mitchell. Jack, I went to school with a guy named Jack Mitchell, I thought it was going to be him, but you're a little younger. You bet. Getting weighed down by those medals, I think, partner. And this one, Annabella Totino. Okay. Ms. Dulevich, are you going to come up and give us a little background? Okay. I see there's some props there as well.
I just want to say how proud I am of all of you, you know that. And I just want to give everyone a little bit of background on the Destination Imagination team. So, the team spent many months, many months including school breaks, some weekends, working together using their imagination, creativity, and their unique special skills to successfully create their solution. In April, they had to attend the New York State Tournament in Binghamton, New York, where they presented their solution, Tricky Tales, to a group of appraisers, and the team came in first place, allowing them to advance to Global Finals. In May, the team participated in Global Finals in Kansas City, Missouri, which was a great trip, right?
Yes.
And the team came in fourth place out of 45 teams in their challenge and level. They also received a medal for highest instant challenge score, as well as the Renaissance Award for their performance during the instant challenge. The appraisers wrote the following about the Linwood Seven Stripes and their mastery of the instant challenge. "This team wowed the appraisers with their impeccable execution, use of materials, and raised a sharp understanding of their challenge. Their lightning-quick design proved to be extremely successful." So we are so proud of them. And the students would like to share a little bit more about their journey, if that's possible?
Sure.
Okay, awesome.
We have to give those to the next group that comes up, that's why, that's why we collect those. I'm kidding. Jack, don't worry, you're going to get one. Yeah, don't worry about those people.
Okay. So, I prepared a song, so...
A new song, an original song for this event?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
My name's Sophia, and I love writing music. I wrote a lot of the songs for our skit, and I wrote a lot of the, you know, script for our skit, and I really love music, so, yeah.
Do you need me to do anything?
No, thank you.
Beatbox, anything?
No, thank you.
No thank you?
Mm-hmm. You guys ready? We are the DI team, Seven Stripes, the winning New York team. We are Seven Stripes, and we're here to tell you. DI was fun, and we couldn't have done it without you. Just one look, and we won first place. Another look, and we won fourth place. Whoa, Seven Stripes is a family, Seven Stripes. Yes, there's been ups and downs, but then we turned it around. Come so far, it was a long shot. Seven Stripes, we're forever, Seven Stripes, Seven Stripes. Thank you.
Sophia, I kind of thought maybe somewhere back here I recognized a little bit of the... Oh, that's what it was. That's amazing that you're ABBA fans. Your parents have had good influence on you, I think. More, are you going to sing?
I'm not going to sing, but I'm here to tell you more about Destination Imagination.
Okay.
So, Destination Imagination, or DI, is where teams of students solve STEM challenges that teach us career skills, like how to better understand problems, learn from failure, and think creatively.
Hello, my name is Christina, and I was Immortal in the Bad Spirit Greed. I'm going to be talking about the main challenges. Our team chose the Fine Arts Challenge and the Trickery Tales. Our team chose this because we had a lot of singing, acting, and building skills. Our team needed a costume transformation, an illusion, and a trickster.
Hi, my name is Charlotte, and I play Immortal in the Bad Spirit Hate. Since we all knew about Greek mythology, we decided to base our whole skit about Greek mythology because there are lots of tricksters, like Hermes, the god of trickery. Our theme, our theme was that if one person has all the power, it causes disaster.
Hi, my name is Jack, so this is going to be my Zeus accent. Oi, my name is Jack. In this skit, I played the character Zeus. Our main characters were Zeus, Hades, and our trickster Hermes. Hades is not one of the 12 Olympians, and Hades is lonely in the underworld, but Hades will do anything to become one of the 12 Olympians. But he sees that with great power comes great responsibility, and not one person should have all the power. Further into the school year, we saw that our skit was a lot like Russia and Ukraine, how one man has all the power, and now all those over there is disaster.
Let me ask you, how do you know what Zeus sounded like? That you...
I don't, but, like, when we started this, I kind of, when I was playing, I, like, thought of, like, some funny things just to do as a joke, and then everyone liked it, and I just kept doing it for all the skits we did, and it became like one big good thing.
That's kind of my life story. So, is that a British accent, Australian accent? What is that accent? Kind of Greek?
Yeah. More like Greek.
Okay.
Yeah, we used Google Translate to figure all our accents in the skit. Bella does one, and Sophia does one, and then I do one.
Bella, you do a Greek accent also? Or a different accent? I got to hear, give Bella the mic, please, for a second.
So this is one of my lines that I say as hope. With too much power comes great responsibility. And I'm glad to see you finally realize that not one person should have all the power.
Okay, yeah, that's very good, very good.
Hi, I'm Shray, and I was the narrator in the story. I also made the illusion. The illusion was worth 25 points. It also had three parts, a base, the actual illusion, and a visual representation of the story. As we all know, success is rarely achieved without failure, and DI has taught me that I should accept failure and learn from it, just like Bill Gates or Walt Disney. And failure was not there four times, but overall, it helped me make an unbreakable illusion that helped us in the end.
Hi, I'm Bella, and I play Immortal, and the spirit hope in our skit. And I'm also the, not only am I hope and immortal, I am also the costume designer and maker for the Seven Stripes. And since it was my first time using a sewing machine and making costumes, I had to use easier techniques like straight lines instead of fancy techniques like curves or zigzags. I also made the costume for the costume transformation by hand.
So to thank you for supporting us when we were at Global Finals, Kansas City, we made something for you. These are handmade thank you cards to thank you for helping us along the way. We actually included pictures of our journey inside, and we added some captions to tell you, like, what we were doing. And along with that, we also added some places that were there, like Poland, and Ecuador, and Brazil, and Korea.
So those countries had representatives' children as well competing?
Yeah, so it's Global Finals, so there was teams from, like, all over the world.
You know what, Bella? Put that right here facing that way, so folks can see it, all right? And the other one as well. Thank you so much. Are those cards specifically that thank you for me, or everybody?
The blue one, it says seven on the back, it's for you.
Okay.
And then the other one with the gold is for...
Everybody else? Oh, Ms. Heinz, wow, Ms. Heinz and I got, thank you very much. We're going to share them with everybody, that's right. Thank you so much. We are all, we are definitely going to enjoy them. Thank you so much. So you guys, are we ready for the picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we all got medals, but just not everyone brought it.
All right, guys, look right here, first of all, get on. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Look at your parents.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you, buddy.
I appreciate it.
The whole community, really.
It's really great.
No, that's my...
I'm going to put it here, this way.
We were so fortunate to have Mrs. Dulevich start this, and then when she became our beloved new principal of Linwood, then Mrs. Amalbieta ran with it, and congratulations to her and the team, we are so very proud of you.
One more piece here I want to do before we get into the real meat and potatoes kind of tonight's meeting, although this should always be our focus, obviously, our kids. I'm embarrassed, a couple of people here right now. Mr. Keenan is not here. I want to thank him tonight, really does bring an end to June 30th, the end of his time with us in terms of helping to lead this district, but I want to thank Mr. Keenan for his many years of service, we have a certificate for him as well. He's been a staunch supporter and advocate for our kids, their safety, their security, their everything. They've been everything to him, and I want to thank him for his many years of service to the district. I know he's not here tonight, but he still deserves a round of applause. I'm going to embarrass Ms. Watera now for a second, Ms. Watera again also, thank you for your years of service to this district. From the moment I came into this district and met Sarah and saw how she felt about our kids and our community, and how they always needed to be focused on all of our kids, Sarah, all meant all, it was really important focus for her. When I did, every once in a while, I'd get a call from Sarah, or a comment, or a concern, it was about, hey, are we capturing all of our students in the decision we're about to make? And so I respect you for that, and I want to thank you for that always, and your hard work and dedication to our students. And so Sarah, this is for you. And another certificate, and this will be a surprise, I think, to this gentleman, but maybe not, Mr. John O'Keefe is getting a certificate tonight after being here for six years of watching our youngsters and our family and our friends get certificates for many different things. Mr. O'Keefe is certainly deserving, I wish I could give more, but I think over six years of service to Satrum schools, and so Satrum often is kind of dog years, some people like to say, so we're looking at six times seven, which is, who said that? Thank you, good job, good job. You bailed me out there, thank you. So, Mr. O'Keefe, words cannot really express how much you meant to me personally upon my arrival, but you've been to this district for the past six-plus almost years. You've got us on a straight and narrow in terms of our budgets. These, the youngsters tonight talked about, you know, thanking us, thanking me, I did nothing. I mean, I did nothing, believe me. It's this community, this board, that did all these things. But by having good budgets and a great community that supports us, it allows us to do things like this at a moment's notice, where I get a phone call from Mrs. Dulevich, and like, we're going to Kansas City, Missouri, and you just get to look at these kids, and they're like, we want to eat barbecue. And my dad wants to eat barbecue. And so to be able to do that and send them, because they deserve that. Look at what they're learning. Not just in the classroom around reading, writing, and arithmetic, right? But everything else that they're learning about supporting, even our youngsters before athletes, to support each other. The pride they take in each other. The family unit that they're creating. It's incredible. And Mr. O'Keefe was right there at the heart of it as my deputy, as this district's deputy, and our leader, Guru, someone that we really look to for financial advice and support. And again, leaves us in great standing, and we want to thank him, Mr. O'Keefe, for his time with us. John, you got a nice certificate for that.
John, we're gonna have you and Sarah, we'd like to take a picture. Since John never ever takes a picture with us, we're gonna have a picture taken, please.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Curtain's back.
I'm just gonna give folks a chance to clear out for a second. Jack, you staying, buddy? Are you gonna stay for a little bit? All right, good, good, good. Okay, well, I'm gonna transition here. And there's gonna be a presentation from Ms. Heinz in a few minutes about kind of looking back over our year in terms of academics and things that we've accomplished this year. And then we're gonna transition a little bit to, you know, what lies ahead. That's part of my presentation tonight, but that's gonna take a backseat to what I'm about to say. And it's difficult for me to find the right words to have this conversation, but it has to be had. Yesterday, at East High School, we had a day that... I don't know if embarrassed, embarrassed is not really the right word. It can't happen. We had a day that we can't allow to happen, that we have to learn from and look forward around what took place. Find out why it happened and move forward from there. And so there was a lot of talk around social media about some of the things that happened yesterday. And I worked with Mr. Antonetti about getting a message out to the community that there was a fight early in the morning at the school. That fight grew into another fight, that grew into a food fight. These are not things anybody doesn't know, this is not a secret. This is what happened at the school. Now, it was reported, unfortunately, by several people there, or others that maybe weren't there, that other things took place, that security guards were injured in some way and had to leave in an ambulance, that a window was kicked through, that a child was, I don't even want to say the word, stabbed. None of those three things happened, but they were reported as such on social media. Today, I got different images from people of blood that was on the ground that was not from Sachem School. It was from a curb somewhere, I don't know where. But it wasn't from here. And I asked people to go back and verify that for me, because that happens sometimes. Things start to spill, and they start to grow, and they start to run over. But the fact of the matter is, is there was a serious incident that wasn't handled in the immediate, and I'm concerned about that. Yes, there was a last day of school at East and at North, last day of classes. We have to do a better job, I have to do a better job. And I'm not gonna get into the particulars of some specific thing. But I'm gonna go through some things. That conversation about what's gonna get better happened, started yesterday. I immediately went to the school at noon, once I was informed by several people of what was going on there at the school. So I was there from 12 to almost 1:30. And reviewed all those things that happened. I walked the halls with the principal, with the school leadership. We did ask an SRO from the district, a school resource officer who was a PD member, to come over to the school and stay for the rest of the day. She brought another SRO, so they were there. By the time I arrived, I will tell you that things were calm to the point where kids were in a hall signing autographs, and teachers and staff were signing autographs. There were a lot of kids in the hall. And at the outset, when this fight took place, the initial fight, early in the morning, there were probably about 2,000 kids in the hall, because that's how many kids are at East High School. And when all those kids are in a hall at the same time and something like that happens, it's very dangerous. What happens today in society, which is really unfortunate, I need to do something. You know, I have this conversation with my own kids, and I think of our Sachem kids as our own kids, my own kids. When there's a fight in a hallway nowadays, kids run to it. They run to it, they hoot and they holler, they start filming it. It becomes almost a party type of atmosphere. And that really is upsetting as a father and administrator, a superintendent in this school. I don't want to see our kids doing that, I think that's a wrong message. But we have to do as adults, as the adults, a better job of making sure that that doesn't happen. So, one of the things I've spoken to folks at East about in the immediate is I'd like to see us reconvene the school safety team at East. That team is made up of students, parents, teachers, staff, administrators. I want to see them reconvene as soon as possible, as soon as we can get them together. Because I want them to review personally what happened at the school that day, and how we can get better at making sure it doesn't happen again. You know, we are doing a security assessment throughout the district. The district is contracting with an organization to do that, a threat vulnerability assessment. I want them to start at East High School and come up with recommendations for us. I have asked for increased patrols from our administrators. They already told me that that's gonna happen. And teachers volunteered to support that as well. And I'm really happy to hear that, because we are a team and a family. We need to resolve this issue together. Then there's a general approach, I think, that needs to change in terms of, and I'll be very frank, people let you do, people do what you let them do. I'm gonna say that again, people do what you let them do. And we have to stop letting certain things happen. Not just at East, in a lot of places. And that's something that I will tell you that I am committed to. I unfortunately have experience with large schools and issues like this. And you've probably heard me say time and time again, from a school that had 4,000 students in the building, I was principal there for five years. The most important thing I could ever do to provide for those students and staff with safety and security. Make them feel that they were safe, and that they were welcome, and that they were being heard, so they can learn, to create an environment of learning. And my first year, I didn't feel like we really had that. So I became kind of a hall patrol principal, with my radio out in the halls every single day, had it scheduled, and posted people in different places to make sure that we had an environment that was conducive to teaching and learning. And I'm gonna work with our administration and our folks over at East and our team here in this district to make sure that we have things like that in place. Because I can't bear to watch those videos again, or get another call from staff, from teachers, from parents. I heard from kids who were shaken by what happened yesterday. It's unacceptable. And we have to do better, and we can do better, and we will do better. This will be part of an overall, again, safety approach and an assessment that's gonna help us recognize that there are steps that need to be taken in the short term and the long term. And I'm gonna tell you, that assessment of what happened at East started yesterday and continued with the conversation today, and will continue going forward. And you have my promise on that. That's what I'm gonna say about East right now. Mr. President, okay? I don't know if there's, do we want to have a little bit of a question and answer right now, or conversation?
Before you go, I'm sorry, I'll let you go, I promise. If there's anything that we can't say, you just have to stop us at some point. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank you for the conversation tonight about that, and the action plan you put in place right away, and looking forward to the results. So thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Please, Mike.
I think also, Chris, the community itself appreciates the openness and the explanation and the actual acceptance of that there was a problem there, that we are addressing it, we recognize it, and we're gonna take action to fix it.
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm not a fan of social media. And so when I hear things start to spiral in my inbox about, oh my gosh, this happened, that happened, and I know it's not true, I find out, I verify, I'm like, oh my, I can't go chase all these things down. But yesterday, I probably made a mistake. I, at one, again, I got there at 12, about 1 o'clock, I called in Mr. Antonetti, I was at his office, actually, and said, we're gonna write a note to this community, because they think all these things are spiraling and happening, and we have to let people know that it's, yes, there was a fight in the morning, yes, kids were running in the halls, yes, our security had a hard time getting through that mosh pit that was created, when, again, there's a fight, and kids decide, hey, this is great, let's go run over there and videotape it, or hoot and holler, or do some other stuff. And that's a whole issue for us as a community to try and speak with our kids about. But I said we gotta sit down and talk and let them know, this is, those crazy things, while it was bad, wasn't that peace that many people were hearing? Glasses shattered and things like that.
I think that's the...
But I probably should have put something out maybe a little bit earlier. A part of that pushback was my fault, because again, I don't want to be led by things that are happening that are conjecture or rumor. And maybe I should have responded a little bit sooner. I went there, I needed to see what was going on, and walked those halls with the administration, which I did, and the school resource officers were there. And our administrators and teachers that were out in the hall, I commend them and thank them. There's an obvious issue that needs to be rectified there. I'm very confident Mr. Antonetti and I will work very closely together to make sure that those things happen. And there were other people that take part in it as well. Mr. Wayne, our security boss, I called him, I said, I'm heading over there. And he said, I'm coming with you. And we, you know, we went there immediately together. And we need to have a better plan in place for that last day of school. You know, some things change from what's typically a last day there, and I think that led a lot to what took place. I don't care, it's unacceptable.
I just think the community, again, appreciates being frank with them. And again, I guess we should all warn everybody about social media. What you necessarily read on social media is not necessarily the truth, as we're finding out. So to be somewhat cautious about what you're reading as far as deeming it to be true.
Some of the kids in the building, I think, were reading it and fearful that it was true also. And it wasn't to that extent, but it wasn't good. And as I said, I'm not gonna defend any of that, any of it.
I want to thank you too, you've been very candid from the start of this. It's unacceptable what happened. We, as a district, need to do better. High schools, all the schools here, if this is, we have to do better. But also, as a parent, there's a huge connection between home and school. And we have to work as a partnership. So we have to do better as a school, and we also, as parents, have to have better conversations with our children of what to do in situations, how to handle situations, because it was both. There were faults on both ends. There needs to be consequences for actions. Kids need to know that there's consequences. Parents have to know there's consequences for their child's actions. And we have to follow through with that. To me, those are the two most important things. The school has to do and keep these kids safe. First thing we all learn as educators is the kids need to feel safe and they need to feel loved. They're not gonna learn if they don't feel those two things. So those are things that we have to make sure that they feel. But we, as parents, also have a huge part in this piece too, of educating our children and teaching them right from wrong that they're coming to school, knowing that if a food fight occurs, you walk away, you go get help. You know, you don't get into it and participate. And I know kids make mistakes. My kids are not perfect. I was not perfect at that age, I can think back of a few things. But I think we all just have to do a better job, because what happened yesterday was, again, unacceptable. And I thank you for being very honest and straightforward with us with all of this.
I could never get into discipline about a particular student, anything like that. But unfortunately, some kids are gonna start next year, not in school. And that is a bad way to start the year. And I gotta tell you, I was Mr. Suspension when I was principal. I was very proud of the fact I spent 300 kids my first year and things like that. Suspensions don't always work, because you, especially when you start out the year that way. But unacceptable, and it has to be. And then we have to bring people back in and get them back into the flow and back into the family. Families make mistakes, families have arguments, families have disagreement, but we have to work together again at the end of the day. And that's certainly the goal, and that's what we're gonna do. Look at what we created. Look at our students, the first two groups we had here. That's like the best of us. And then we have a conversation, unfortunately, that reflects something different. And I know that great people there, and great leadership there, and great staff there, and we're gonna work together to turn that around immediately. And actually, Ms. Heinz, we have some great information for our community tonight about, you know, again, looking back over this past year, our board goals, and looking forward to what we're gonna do next year. Is that correct?
Before Ms. Heinz goes, Stephanie has a question.
Not a question, more of a statement. I want to thank you for taking what you saw on social media seriously and investigating it, because the children communicate that way, and it was getting out to the parents, and hysteria was definitely happening yesterday. So thank you for not dismissing it and actually investigating and, you know, taking it seriously, because that's how our kids talk to each other now, and that's how they're talking to us. So I really appreciate that you took those situations seriously.
When I got to the school, Mr. Antonetti was standing right there at the front door with his radio in his hand. I was happy to see that he was out there in the midst of it, because he knew that he had a situation he needed to take care of. And that's, again, as I said, my assessment of that situation started before I arrived at the door.
Anyone else? Please.
Ms. Heinz, thank you. We're just gonna walk through this, I probably, as usual, interrupt Ms. Heinz. I apologize in advance.
So before Dr. Pilatari interrupts, I just want to give you a brief history. Each year since 2017, we give, in the fall, a presentation around our Board of Education goals, which have come out of our curriculum council, student roundtables, meetings with our administrators, staff, community, et cetera. And then in the spring, we come back to you to let you know what we've accomplished and some thoughts based on our work of what we're looking to do ahead. This year in particular, though, is a special one. In 2017, we were crafted, our cabinet, coming out of my office to revamp and revise our Board of Education goals, and to really start looking at all the programs across our school district. This year is the end of our five-year plan that we started in 2017. And now that Dr. Pilatari, Ms. Trambetta has joined us, along with myself and Ms. Kipel Eden, and whoever is special enough to take over John's position, will now start the next round for our new five-year plans beginning next year. So we are also at the culmination of going to almost every single one of our 15 buildings to celebrate the success of the five years that we've done. It's been amazing to see our staff and to see everything that we've accomplished. So tonight, we just, again, we're focusing on this year, but I just did want to give you a brief history, that this is a very special time for Sachem. We have, in fact, accomplished almost every single thing that we set out to do, starting in 2017. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Allison. Oh, was that me or you? Oh, okay. So I'm not gonna go through all the nitty-gritty, but I did want to go over each overarching goal. So goal number one, as you know, is to provide safe and secure schools. This year, we set out, and we also align it to our tri-state consortium indicators, which is our safety, community engagement, physical and mental wellness, social and emotional development. So, the actions this year that we were able to accomplish are indeed the ones that we set out to in the fall. We expanded on our district's social and emotional program with anchor lessons from Lions Quest for our elementary schools, and we did finish off our updates for our health units, K-12. This also included the last of our physical education units as well. We implemented two school counselors at the elementary level, and we updated our comprehensive guidance plan, which will be board-approved and posted on our website. We implemented five social workers at our secondary schools, and we also brought forward two therapy dogs, Oakley and Bailey, at the secondary level, which has been a tremendous success for us. The five social workers, as you know, came along with our pandemic funding. It was sorely needed, and we have seen quite a lot of positivity coming from that, so thank you. And then we completed the installation of the new video surveillance system and digital security cameras district-wide. Not that I personally did this, but I know this because Mr. O'Keefe and Mr. Renda have confirmed that we are indeed in this place. We are now, which are Phase Two of the Components of the Smart Schools Investment Plan. Dr. Pilatary?
Yeah, next slide, I think. Go ahead in advance. Yeah, I asked that our, and told the board that I would kind of look back and try to gather some data around our therapy dogs and I'll pilot in our two schools, and I couldn't come up with better data, really, than this. The kids wrote just little cards and things like that about how our dogs made them feel in the two schools. Made me feel better about my day. I'm almost emotional about the dog being in. I'm super happy when he visits his class. Makes me feel so happy. His fur is so soft, that's good to know. Having him here brought my mood up, made me feel happy. I love dogs. I felt better. I was excited and overjoyed. I feel excited because I love animals. So, certainly from our qualitative data from our students, therapy dogs were a huge success, and we're going to try to spread them out a bit more to the elementary as well, not just our own therapy dogs from the two high schools, but through their therapy dog plans and programs.
Correct. My office right now is in the process of going through the Bosse's contract to work with Long Island Therapy Dogs, which is where Oakley and Bailey were certified. So, we're very excited about that. We'll be able to have visits for each one of our schools. Okay, enhance student achievement, quality of instruction and leadership skills. So, this is about creativity, innovation, performance assessments, and standardized assessments. We continue to establish consistency in all of our curriculum, our assessments and our instructional practices, K-12, with a focus on data analysis. And certainly because of the pandemic, differentiated instruction to target learning gaps from the pandemic. This was through our district data teams. We're finishing up the third round of all of our district data teams across our schools, where we're individually looking at the building as a whole, then by grade level, then down to teacher and student. We found great success with this. We also deepen student engagement and provided opportunities for more rigor through professional development, additional resources, to reengage project-based learning and flipped classroom, especially at the secondary level. The secondary level, unfortunately, a lot of more traditional teaching had to come back because of COVID and the rose and just not being able to really be in close proximity. I'm happy to say that we're starting to see that sprinkle throughout our secondary buildings, and that will be our focus for next year, as well as differentiation of instruction.
If I could jump in for a second, that AP Capstone Program, I always talk about that when I get the chance, and both, at both schools, to see students take a position on a topic, do the research, defend that topic. I mean, they're literally defending a dissertation for any one of them that are going to look to become, go on and get their doctorate when they go off to school, the research, the skills that they are learning there. It's just phenomenal to see, again, what we have built in this district and this family.
Yeah, so, expanding on our district, this is year two of our AP Capstone Program. This is going to be directly connected to our CLA Civic Readiness Program that we're building right now in our middle school, and will eventually dip down into the elementary school, which we'll talk about a little bit later on with a service project that we intend to implement starting next year. And then we're in the middle of completing our transition to the Next Generation Science Standards. This year, we implemented one new elementary hands-on science kit at the elementary level. Next year, we will be completing it with the remaining two kits. We had professional development, time for teachers to plan together, train together, and then at the secondary level, we are also completing our curriculum and practices. The department, which I think I've mentioned earlier in other presentations, chose to go with Emily Kang, a nationally recognized consultant around that, as this is quite new teaching, and she's been really warmly welcomed, and we will continue with her next year. Okay, goal two, enhancing student achievement and quality of instruction and leadership skills. I don't know why that went down, but I guess it's because of the PDF. My apologies. So, we did, through our ninth period that we built, expanding on our exploratory languages to the sixth grade and our CTE exploratory units in grades six to eight. For those of us that don't know what CTE means, that's Career and Technical Education. We're very fortunate here at CHM. We have quite a few of our own career and technical education pathways, whether it be culinary, entrepreneurship, which we're updating, cosmetology, et cetera, and then culinary, I think I just said that, actually. We've built exploratory units for our grades six to eight, so that students can start experiencing that, get some exposure to it, so that they can choose their pathway towards graduation as they get into the high school. We also provided equitable support for student needs. So, what does that mean in terms of looking at data and students who do need more intervention? Our IST process, which is our instructional support teams at the elementary schools, we're now moving into our middle schools to expand. We really want to make sure it's a little bit easier on the elementary level. You have classes where, you know, teachers know every single little thing about their students because they, you know, appear to have a handful of students, but then they're also teaching six different subjects. Quite a feat. When you get to the middle school and the high school, you could be teaching well over 120 to 150 students, but we still want to have that laser-like focus on intervention for students who need it. So, we're bringing that process up into the middle school and the high school and utilizing by expanding the NWA benchmarking system. It's now fully in our elementary and our middle schools. We'll be expanding it to second grade next year, and then into ninth grade for at-risk students at the high school, and then also for our special education and E&amp;L students as well at the high school. We made curriculum revisions to provide enrichment to support earth science and algebra at the middle school. And again, not because we just want to push students into earth science and algebra, but whether they choose to go into that or not, we want to make sure that the great work and the progress that we're seeing with our math units in the elementary school continues in the middle school, so that students have a stronger foundation and have the ability to make that choice for themselves, or they can just go stronger into ninth grade, knowing that they will do well in those two courses. We completed our de-hubbing program for our E&amp;L students to ensure that they had homeschool placement. Why did we do that? Because we really believe and deserve that all students should be able to be in their home buildings with friends that are on their block, go to activities that are right around the corner for them, so that they know that they are a part of their neighborhood. It's really challenging when you're going to a school that could be across your community that you might not be able to get to because of transportation reasons, et cetera. And obviously, that meant professional development and additional resources for our teachers and our students. We also redesigned our instructional practice and programming for special education. This year was our time to audit everything and then to come up with goals for next year. So, next year, we will be starting to implement that plan with a special attention on literacy practices in all of our self-contained classes, our inclusion classes, resource room, et cetera. We will be doing specialized reading instruction, training around LLI, which is a reading support close to reading recovery. We will also be doing small group literacy practices and math practices as well. And then looking at resources so that our teachers have everything that they need in place in their classrooms, as well as book rooms. We're very excited for this. Our one-to-one initiative continued to grow with grades six to 12 and grades four to five, and we will continue to implement the instructional technology resources. Mr. Renda has done an amazing job with his staff, ensuring that we had professional development all year long, whether it be in person or virtual. We also completed, or almost complete, in the fall, I think, is the last of the buildings with our wireless infrastructure, so super excited about that. And then, of course, preparation for staffing and additional electives came out of Ms. Tronbetta's office once we built the ninth-period day, so thank you to her and her staff to ensure that we were able to begin our 2022, 2023 school year successfully for ninth period. Okay, so, improving parent, community, and staff communication, and I know that this was the utmost importance to our board here in making sure the transparency and that the communication was streamlined. We take that very seriously. So, telling our academic story, we began to reengage with the use of safe social media, making sure that accuracy and just showcasing what's going on in our buildings was being shared. We reinstated our parent workshop series, very proud of that. They had gone away during the pandemic. We had both in-house and virtual. We found the virtual to be more of an attendance gatherer, so we probably will continue to go with that. But we had a few workshops around crisis intervention and also around safety in schools, so that students and parents understood, more so parents, around safety drills, et cetera. And we will continue that moving into the school year for next year. Our Board of Education committees, we did go with an updated process, as you know. We elicited new members on participation, and I'm happy to say that the ones that I ran, as well as Ms. Tronbetta and Mr. O'Keefe, were heavily attended. It was really nice to have members who came back each time. When you have that, you're able to make greater plans and you're, but are able to have more consistency and feedback when it's the same people that are returning each year. We just remind everybody that those are your appointments, so if you're interested in joining a committee next year, please see Ms. Floria or email her so that you can get an application to that. And then we continue to grow the district's business alliance, to grow our school business partnerships, to help us out with our work-based learning program and our career and technical education program. If you remember, we began to reengage at the east side, and we were kind of making more of like a district team approach, but we've grown in so much in terms of our population and events that we have, that we'll now be splitting it up, and we'll have a north and an east feeder with still a district-focused attention. So, we're very excited about that. Improved fiscal responsibility and accountability, I think everyone can safely say, going off of Mr. O'Keefe's presentations, that we are in great financial spots right now, and certainly that was through the prudent budget process and fidelity to our commitment in how we were doing spending-wise. So, we continue to monitor and manage district reserves to ensure long-term financial stability, completed voter-approved capital projects, and continue the process of identifying and prioritizing improvements in the future, maintaining transparent and sustainable budgeting process, continuing to review out-of-district placements with our special education office, not just because we wanted to save money, and I know sometimes people really look at that as a huge, you know, budget need, but in all honesty, it's also because we'd like our guys and gals to be here. We believe that our programs are ones that we can continue to grow. I think of our farm table and our culinary that we have, our self-contained students, and what an amazing program, and we will continue to do that as we look to the drama program as well. And we were able to optimize successfully and utilize our grant funding for programming and equipment. As you know, we got quite a bit of money through the pandemic resources brought to us, so we had talked about, and I'm sure you know, we are beginning that process of instilling all of the learning classrooms, outdoor learning classrooms at the elementary schools to each, as well as a learning activity center. And I will let Dr. Pilatary talk a little bit about that, why we're calling, but it really is beautiful, and we're also going to be expanding that next year into our secondary schools.
So, we grew up with playgrounds and on the playgrounds and hanging from playgrounds, and I fell off and broke my arm on the playground, all those things, to now, we call them learning activity centers. I want everyone to remember that, because when we wrote the federal grant, we had to write "learning activity centers." So, we're going to make sure that we adhere to that, and the kids will learn while they are performing and playing and hopefully not breaking their arms on the learning activity center. Very important. Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Okay, so, committed to providing the staff with necessary tools. This is like our professional development, so that we can have the highest quality of education. This is a continuation. So, we updated our district's professional development plans, and it's consistent with our district PD in-person and virtual offerings. This year, we will be reinstituting a summer menu, which I will be sharing with the board and over the summertime, so that you can see we have well over, I think it's about 45 offerings now, both virtually and in-house, so that our staff can begin to engage in some of the professional development in the summer, should they choose, and lock some of those hours for next year. We found that to be very successful early on in the pandemic, so that people felt, you know, ready to go day one as soon as we came in. Plus, this year, we have only one superintendent's conference day, starting in the beginning of the year, so it doesn't really leave a whole lot of time around professional development. So, we're excited about that. And re-engaging our building data teams, which I talked about before, to ensure that we have a laser-like focus on performance data for differentiation of instruction. We also utilized East and Suffolk Bosse's resources for equitable hiring practices that came out of Ms. Keepal Eden's office. And then instructional elementary principal aides. I want to stop here for a second, because they really have truly been such a tremendous support, and we thank the board and the wisdom to bring them on. You know, we don't have APs at the elementary school, and we do have quite a bit of new programs and resources, and they not only work to coach each other as colleagues, but also help with rolling out the programs, resources that have to be given out, and we're super excited to have them as well. I also want to just point out, because I know we've had a conversation around this, any of our professional development, all that we're doing, any consultants, these are through joint decisions that we make with our departments or our grade levels and our staff. It's very important to us that anything that we're doing in our schools is one that all of our stakeholders feel very comfortable around, and that they feel that they have the appropriate training that they want to see for themselves. Oh, sure. No, no, no. I wasn't sure it was working, so thank you. All right, so, it's just one slide, but I did want to share with you, because in the July 6 reorganization meeting, I know Dr. Pilatary and I would really love to engage and do a little bit of a deeper dive into the data for the year, but just so that you can see, reading across grades three through eight, you could see that in almost every single grade from the fall to the spring, our students have made progress. In the middle school, you'll say, well, I don't really see that much progress there, or may even be a little bit, but that's because as students grow in their reading levels, you know, in the younger grades, K1 and 2, they fly through their reading levels, because it's more about understanding how to read, to decode words, fluency, how I read, the tone. But once you start getting into comprehension, so the inferencing, what have you, it takes a while to move a level necessarily, or you may even dip back a little bit if you go from fiction to nonfiction. So, but I want to also point out that these scores are based on norms that are prior pandemic. So, I just, again, want to explain that that means that our students not only made progress this year in their reading, based on our data team meetings, individualized, small-group instruction that our teachers implemented, but also that they are not very far off where our students were prior to the pandemic. That's an amazing thing for us to celebrate. That means that our staff, our students, our families helped out to make sure that the gap that most people feel, our students feel, while we may not be at the level we want, our students continue to make progress, and I'm very proud of that. This is math. You could see, again, the progress that's been made. Next year, you'll be able to see ninth grade and any of the at-risk students at the high school, as well as grade two. Okay, this is Founderson Pennell. This is an assessment that we utilize in the elementary schools. So, on top of NWA, this really kind of dives deeper into myself as a student, who am I as a reader? What are the things that I have strengths and weaknesses in, and for a teacher to be able to plan their guided reading groups? And then our math benchmarks, again, these are our math units, these are assessments that our teachers utilize in the classroom. But again, you could see growth. Okay, goal six is we are CHM, right? So, that's about us, building our family, our community, continuing to raise pride in our school district. And this year, we were able to reinstitute homecoming, which we're very excited about. We have not had that through the pandemic, and consistency experiences by grade-level field trips, clubs, drama, and musical events. I have a little star there, because I know that, you know, over the course of the last few weeks, we've had some feedback that, you know, maybe there aren't equitable field trips in all of the buildings, or we're not sure why one grade's doing one thing and not the other, and so we're very mindful of that. While we have anchor field trips at all the different grade levels, we'll continue to work with our PTAs, our club leaders, our administrators, to make sure, and our plan next year is to get out kind of like a monthly calendar, so that parents can see exactly what field trips are happening across the buildings by grade level. And then we continue to focus on positive media coverage of all of our CHM accomplishments. So, again, you probably saw many things on News 12, on our website, on our social media pages. It's exciting to celebrate. Okay, so, looking ahead. Before I go into this, though, I really do just want to say, it's always an honor to come up here and for us to share all the great work that's going on, but I would be remiss without thanking all of our directors, our building principals, our PAs, our teachers, who always have the boots on the ground, for all the work that has occurred each year. When you say the people behind the curtain, they're not often the ones that really get the thank you, or the ones that are in the public, but without them, we would not be able to do all of this work. able to do all of this work. We're lucky enough to have the vision and to be able to go and monitor and make sure that things are rolling out, but those are the people who are really making sure day in and day out, our staff has what they need, our students have what they need. So looking ahead to 2022 and 2023, these are the next steps that we're considering. The one you'll see on the top, though, is the most important, as it will feed the rest below. And we believe that we will probably do the same process as we did back in 2017, with looking at the next-year five-year strategic plan. And this may include looking also at our mission statement, to kind of say, does this still represent us? And we'll most likely be doing this again through our curriculum council. We'll also be engaging students through our student roundtables, our teacher roundtables, faculty meetings, surveys, et cetera. But we are looking to expand NWEA now, because we've had so much positive feedback, and it really helped, as you can see, with the progress of our students, to grade two, and then high school, as I said before, to grade nine, for the AIS, ELL, and special education students. We'll also continue to update our code of conduct to our code of character, and review suspension rates to ensure equitable practices. And you also heard us talk about our crisis intervention plans, which is of the utmost importance. Our Northwell Health Partnership, I believe we're onboarding this summer and looking to really fully implement beginning in the fall, which, again, a wonderful resource for our families. Our outdoor classrooms and Activia areas will be unveiled. We will be, again, this year, we were able to bring on, through our grants, some additional help in terms of, for teachers and for our chairs, especially at the secondary level, with an accountability coach that served through our administration. This year, we would like to kind of change that position around a little bit, and add on an ENL accountability coach, because we are seeing so many students come in, and we just want to make sure that, again, everybody has the support that they need. We are going to be updating our program and instructional practices, I said, so we'll begin implementing our plans for special education. We will now have a one-to-one device implementation for grades K to 3. When we talked about our code of character, we are, and this actually came through, again, the voices of some of our teachers, ideas that we were batting around myself, a K-12 presidential service program, so that students as young as kindergarten, and this actually came from Ms. Zumo, if you remember, she was here last time. She's clearly one of our, you know, shining stars, always thinking, "Here's everything that we're looking to do," and came up with this wonderful idea, because she has it in the school leadership that she's in, thought it was wonderful, "But kids as young as kindergarten can start earning hours towards service and understanding what that means to serve your community and others." Again, talking about the expansion of our therapy dog visits to the middle school and our elementary schools. Again, expanding our business alliance now to include North High School. Because of the overflow, we do want to make sure that each school has their own dedicated team. We'll continue with our seasonal data team review meetings at each building to monitor progress of our students. We will explore the creation of a CHM education foundation. CHM Spirit Days, looking to institute CHM Fridays, so that on Fridays, everyone's wearing their CHM garb, and perhaps money can be donated to a cause of our choosing each Friday. You heard Ms. Trambetta talk last time about our VAEF safety application and Bosie's risk vulnerability assessment. We'll be updating college articulation agreements, and that is for our career and technical education, as well as other courses that we have. We're also going to be looking at the applications and updating those for culinary, entrepreneurship, and cosmetology. We will expand our seal of civic readiness and seal of biliteracy, to ensure that all students have the ability to add these wonderful seals when they graduate and leave us. We will be unveiling our fitness, cardio, and weight rooms, which will open in the fall, and again, the pandemic money has helped us to support that much-needed revisions to those areas. We will organize a committee, so that we can properly look to, look for planning around our field turf. We'll be conducting school safety and threat, oh, we actually have that down twice, my apologies, but you know what? Twice, you know that it's very important to us. And I think that was it, actually. So I just want to thank you again, the support of the board is so imperative to us, the support of our community. And again, these are our first ideas. We will be bringing these to our stakeholders through our curriculum council, and refining this over the summertime at our Board of Education retreat, our administrator retreats, and our end-of-the-year planning with SCTA and SAA.
Does anyone have any questions? Please.
Thank you for providing the NWEA. That was actually on my future board discussion, so we could check that off the list. Thank you. I was happy to see that. Just are parents going to receive that information to see the progress that their child made over the year and where they started, and kind of where they end the year? Or if it's going to be on the port, like, on the portal?
Yep. Actually, we were just having conversation around that today, myself and Dr. Pilatari. Ms. Buckberg and Ms. Veltre are in the process right now of gathering all of those reports, and they'll be downloaded through Bosie's onto each child's account. Before we do that, we are going to look at the parent reports to make sure that they are clear, understandable, people know how to do that, and we will also look to give some guidance and support of how to read the reports. Probably somewhat of like a screencastify, so somebody could just click on it, they'll see all of our wonderful faces, and we'll explain it, but yes, that's exactly what we'd be doing.
Rob?
Harry, the accountability coaches that we're planning off next year, is that something that could be funded through our American Rescue money?
That is.
It is?
Yes, and we did do that, because, you know, with the influx of, you know, all the needs of the pandemic, it became very clear to us that we needed just one more layer, so that the teachers knew that they had not only the principal assistants, but then they also have these accountability coaches to kind of walk them through any of our program updates, any of the data that we were looking at, and we did find it very successful this year.
Is that something that we, if it's successful, we're going to look to pursue, even after that COVID money expires?
Yes. So what we're doing presently is looking through the grants. We know that we have about two years. We're going to put together a list of items that we would hope, as our goal, to keep, based on Mr. O'Keefe's, you know, his findings, as well as the person who's going to be coming in. I'll be working with them, looking at the grants, Dr. Pilatari, the rest of the cabinet, to see how we might be able to plan for some of these spots in the future.
So it's possible something like that could be funded by Title I or Title IX grants?
We did get a little bit of a dip in one of our title grants right now, but we have narrowed it down to, because of the free and reduced applications and everything being free, most people didn't realize that they still had to fill out of those applications. So we also want to do a little bit of education around our community in terms of, if the need is there, please fill that out, because that's how we do gain that. It's always a challenge, yeah.
I know you put some of the math, middle school math scores up there, and how the kids are improving in bar chart. This year, we piloted a, I don't call it, but an algebra for most kind of thing, where students volunteered.
Yes.
To challenge themselves. Is there, could you give us a brief update on how that's working? Are kids ready? Are there some bumps in the road?
Sure. Well, I mean, anytime you make an expansion, there's always going to be a bump in the road, and I know that we've talked about it in the past, that typically, that 25% to 30% of the students that go into those classes, those are students to get mastery. They're getting that top of the top. Our belief has been since 2017, and now Dr. Pilatari has been very clear about he's in agreement, we want all students to be able to have that choice in order for them to do that. So for the past two years, we have expanded at least by one section at each building, allowing more students who feel like they have that knowledge base to start moving forward. But I think you saw through that data that we're still seeing that. This year, though, now moving into next year's ninth period, we offered an enrichment program for students who wanted to try their hand at algebra next year. We did an after-school enrichment program for them. I know there was about 30 to 40 students from each one of our middle schools who voluntarily said, "I love math and want to try this." So those students will be welcome to go into algebra next year. We may see a little bit of dip in our scores, but that's not why we're doing it, right? We want to make sure that everybody has the choice to do that. If there, I will be clear, though, if there's a student who really did not, just did not do well, they are still welcome, but we have asked those teachers to just contact the families so they can make a wise decision and decide if that's right for their child.
So it'll all be, always be by choice?
Yes. And I mean, at some point, it'll just be how we sort of roll, because we're seeing stronger and stronger math students coming up from the elementary school, and now they're going to have three years of extra math support. So we would think that they're...
Maybe better students.
Yeah, right.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just add that each time we add kids to Algebra VIII, those scores stay consistent. Those teachers are outstanding, those families that support them are outstanding. We want to continue to see that grow as much as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines.
Thank you.
We're just going to take something out of order just from, and then I apologize, it's completely my fault. We should have done the retirees first, so you didn't have to sit through some presentations.
That was my fault, I apologize.
And if someone had to leave, it is entirely my fault, I'll take the blame for it. But I am going to turn it over to Mrs. Cable Eden, please. We'll approve it later. I don't think there's going to be an issue approving the retirements.
Forgive my back. Thank you for your patience. There are a few things that we wanted to share about the importance of everybody in our district. They say it takes a village to raise children, and our employee base is a sound employee base of people who really care about the children that they see every day in the classroom. As residents, your children who are traveling back and forth on buses with our drivers to grounds that are safe and well-maintained, into classrooms that are full of music, full of laughter, full of support. And that all happens because the people who are here in our classrooms, in our halls, in our, on our grounds, are here to support each and every child. In the last two years in particular, we all know it was a challenge for all of us, and the roles that each of our employees have played have been critical. So tonight, we have some retirees that we want to bring up and just share a few words about how important you are to us. We did have some folks who did retire a little bit earlier this year. They do say that when you retire, you may take 10 years off your expression from whatever it is that goes on. I just saw our male clerk who retired about a month ago, and I think she just dropped three years. You know, every time I see her, she seems to get younger and younger. So without any further ado, I just want to call up folks, have you come up and recognize you, and I just want to share a few words, overall and general, about the things that folks have been saying about each and every one of you. The retirees who are here joining us this evening, and I know that Cheryl was here a little earlier, so she's included in this, too, have been some of the kindest staff that we have working with our students. Your smiles brighten up the students' days. And your coworkers, because remember that while we work here together, we go through all of our milestones. Your incredible energy, your hard work, your encouragement to our students throughout everything, including the last two years, because many of them may not have gotten to be as successful as they could be without you. You are bringing out the best in each of the students, supporting them, making sure to make connections with their family. Every moment of every day, you have one pearl of wisdom that you're putting a seed into one student or more's life that will come to bloom in the future. And your hard work and dedication shows up time and time again. For the families, we'd like to thank you all for sharing, your wives, your mothers, your fathers, your sons. Each and every one of them are part of our CHM family, who are always going to be welcome in our halls, in our lives, and a part of everything that we do here in CHM. So I would like to ask each of you to come up and thank you for all of your hard work, your dedication, your commitment, and everything that you've brought to our students. Tracy Brennan, teacher assistant at High School North. Lisa Brown, elementary teacher at Winona. Congratulations. You're welcome. Susan Sella, teacher assistant at Grundy. Karen Cough, speech teacher at Grundy. Regina McBride, music teacher at Chippewa. I'm not a left-hander, I'll give you this for now. Nice performance last week, and is your birthday coming up, Regina? Happy birthday. Day after tomorrow? Yes, congratulations. Cheryl Sumler was here a little earlier, so we want to congratulate her. And then, last but not least, Mr. Metzger, come on up. He retired a little bit earlier this year with 37 years of service here in grounds, and also was in the halls as a student in the CHM school district. Congratulations.
Ms. Cable, I'm going to jump in on John for a second here, Mr. Metzger. One of the first people I met in the district, Ms. O'Keefe introduced me to him, I don't think he even looked up, because he was so busy working on our fields and grounds and taking care of them for our kids, and I want to thank you for that. Every time I looked out my window, this guy doesn't talk to anybody, doesn't fool around with anybody, this guy works. I'm sad to see everyone leave, I'm sad to see you certainly leave as well. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Please don't feel obligated to stay any longer.
We also have cake and coffee for retirees and their families. Enjoy and congratulations.
Where is that, Ms. Cable Eden?
Staff development room A.
Okay. We're going to stay, we're going to stay here, though, right?
Well, I could jump across and have a little cake.
We can go check in. We're going to stay here.
Over to page two on the agenda is letter E, the approval of minutes for the June 1st, 2022 regular meeting. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Isurnia, seconded by Mr. Scavo. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Number three is visitors. This part of the visitor section is for agenda items. We have two visitors for agenda items.
Hello. In just a few short weeks, I'm going to be up at that dais, sitting in one of those chairs, working side by side with each of you. So I wrestled with the idea of whether I should speak tonight or not. But for the next two weeks, I am still a parent and a community member, and a concerned one at that. Last meeting, I sat here in front of all of you. We spoke about security because of the tragedies that are happening all over our country. I spoke about how there's a current sitting board member who is a retired police officer, the former head of security at William Floyd High School, and holds a master's degree in homeland security. I sat here and asked each of you to make a motion to have him make a presentation on the positives and negatives of armed security. I asked each of you to have him consult with the board about the security before we go spending $30,000 on something that won't even get us results until well into the next school year, and none of you even had anything to offer. I like to speak honestly and frankly, and sometimes people don't like that, and I'm sorry, but that's who I am. I speak the truth. I know for a fact that there are personality conflicts with Mr. Kiernan and the board. I myself was not very nice to him when he got on this board. I had preconceived notions, and I had listened to the fodder of other people. Shame on me for this. But as time went on, and I realized that this man did have a lot to offer in the way of the security... of the security of our staff and our children, I put my personal feelings aside, and I started to truly listen to him. And I started to understand that he was coming from a great place for security and advice. And while it will be very irresponsible of me to speak of all my truths in public, I will tell you that just a very few things that Mr. Kiernan has to offer to help make our schools much safer than they currently are. We can get them going to ask as just, as a board member, to put your personal feelings aside and put the safety and security of our children and our staff ahead of all else. And I'm asking you, the board members that are up there currently, right now, each of you, some of you, someone of you, put your hand up and make a motion to have Mr. Kiernan come and make a presentation to this board. And if once again, none of you do it, shame on you. At my very last board meeting in 2019, someone felt that I was grandstanding. This person asked, said that I was doing so because it was my last meeting. Well, I always open my mouth, whether it's my first meeting, my last meeting, or just as a parent. And saying these things, I haven't shut up yet. I didn't do it because it was my last meeting, and it wasn't grandstanding. It was me speaking the truth because it needs to be spoken. I haven't even begun my first meeting of my next term, and you better believe that I'm not going to shut up then. I'm not here to make friends, I'm here to make a difference. I make friends, if I make friends along the way, that's a bonus. But I will not be silent just to keep or make friends and just to keep doing what we've always done, which is not speaking out in public.
Laura, you checked off box Agenda Items 14B. Is that what we're talking about? Only because I, there are people that aren't going to speak right now until later about agenda items. You have an agenda item. Is that what we're talking about? Okay, please. Sorry. No, not you.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Pelletieri, members of the cabinet, board trustees. So as a community member, before I sit up there, I know for the board discussion tonight, you're going to be talking about committees as well as security. So I just wanted to share, when we had our legislative committee last year, and we had the legislative forum with our elected officials, I thought it was a, well, it was a good event. So in speaking about security, when I looked, 1999 Columbine happened. Since then, there is no specific training for security guards in schools. I think a security guard in a school is very different than a security guard in a bank, in a mall, at a concert. I think a security guard in a school, dealing with kids, dealing with students of all different abilities, requires a very specific training. So what I'm suggesting is our legislative committee be formed with the reorganization, and the more community members that get involved, in my opinion, I know it's not everybody's, the better. Speaking of curriculum council, Ms. Hines, you talked about curriculum council. The first year we had it, it was open to all parents, it was open to all teachers. That Linwood was the teacher that did the first project-based learning in Satrum ever. And this is where she brought it to. She had us all come into our classroom because it was teachers from every building, from, it wasn't limited. That, to me, is what a curriculum council should be. Parents, teachers from all different areas, administrators. So when we limit, and we're just choosing the people that we want on a curriculum council, we're not getting input from everybody. So moving forward, I just want to express, I know not everybody thinks about that, but I just want to express that the more, to me, involvement we can get from our teachers, from our administrators, and from our community, the better our board committees will be. Then just tonight, having the kids come was one of the best meetings I've ever been to, and I've been to meetings over 20 years. So I have to say, this is what reminds us why we're here, why we're doing this, why we're volunteering. This is exactly, even though my kids are gone from school, even though my son graduated 2014, seeing this and knowing you're a part of it and you're making a difference is the reason why every one of us sit here. And last but not least, Mr. O'Keefe, it's been a pleasure working with you as a board trustee on the audit committee. You will be missed, but I wish you success. And I know we are Satrum, so you'll be missed, but we're going to keep on this path and do the best that we can. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Laura. Number four is an action item. Letter A is the approval of contract amendment for Dr. Christopher J. Pelletieri. Motion by Mr. Isurnia, seconded by Mr. Scavo. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining? Please.
So Chris, you had two very rough years, first two years, but it's been a pleasure working with you this year, and I've learned a lot about you. And I just want you to, I'm sure you do recognize this is a show of faith in you as the leader of this district going forward, to move this district in the right direction and take us to the next level. I have a lot of faith in you. I think the district has embraced you, and I'm looking forward to watching what you're going to do over the next several years.
Can I comment?
Please.
I'm only abstaining because I'm new to the board, and I wasn't part of any of this discussion except for the past two weeks, and I don't think it's responsible to me to vote on a contract of this magnitude. That's all. I love Dr. Pelletieri, so. Other than that, I just don't feel it's responsible to me to vote on something like this.
Thank you, Stephanie. Rob?
Just, Chris, you know, this is my 30th year teaching in education. And, you know, I have to say that the last two years, by far, for any educator, any administrator, any school staff, has been the hardest, okay, that we've ever seen, you know? You know, when I was going through teacher training, one of my professors said, listen, the first three years are the hardest. After that, everything gets easier every year. And he was so wrong, because the last two years, having to deal with a global pandemic, and having to deal with, you know, with a lot of different things, a lot of, you know, state threatening a cut in aid, you know, for us, 10%, you know, the vaccines, the masks, the, you know, and you always had a calming sense about you. You know, hopefully, that stuff is all behind us, and now we could really start focusing on the stuff that, why we're here, which is education. So like Mike said, I'm looking forward to seeing where you could bring this school to, you know? And I think initially, when you first came on, you said something about, you know, chase the best, but eventually pass them. And I'm hoping that, that your leadership and your concept, your ideas, and your experience, that we're going to get there, that we're going to be able to, you know, be that leader and have people chase us. You know, that's, so congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing what you can do over the next, so please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I recognize the commitment this board and this community is making, and I look forward to the challenge and the times ahead, and a long-term commitment to this family, being a part of this family, the way you guys embraced me from, from the get-go, is really important to me. And I feel that same way back, and want to make sure that we continue to grow, and yes, chase great, and make sure that we become the Satrum that we all have in mind as what we envision, that greatness. We are one of the largest districts in the state. The state should be following our lead on a lot of things, and we have huge plans. We saw what we accomplished in these past couple of years in the middle of a pandemic. So I'm really proud of this community, I'm proud of these families, I'm proud of these kids. I sat with valedictorians the other day, I sat with kids at the East High School Science Research Symposium. We had a couple hundred kids and parents there on a Friday night at 8:00 PM. And to see these kids going to Carnegie Mellon, and to Brown, and to Princeton, and to talk with other kids who are getting a job, walking out of here certified and licensed, right out of high school into a career. We want everyone, all means all, everyone getting what they want out of their life, their future. And we can do that in this district with the right guidance, leadership support from everybody. We can do that, and we're going to do that. And I'm very proud that this district has reached out to me and said they want to continue this relationship, and I certainly do long-term as well. So I thank you for that opportunity. I'm certainly humbled by it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So just once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention? On the bottom of page two is business items, consent agenda A through F. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Isurnia, seconded by Mr. Baumann. Any questions? Please.
Business items is the movement of money from, from the shared budget into various accounts?
It's not actually the movement yet. That resolution, which is A, what it basically does is outline the maximum authority that the board will allow to have those funds moved to fund balance into the various reserves once the books are closed over the summer. So each year, we take a look at the various reserves, and there are legal maximums for each of those reserves. So these numbers are not reflective necessarily of actual surplus. This is the maximum amount of money you could move to each of those reserves if it were available. I mean, that part of our plan is the initial amount of money, which is just shy about $400,000, that will go to unassigned fund balance, so we retain the full 4%. And then I think the board's next goal was to fully fund the capital reserve for next year, which is a maximum of $6 million. That's part of that overall plan, to take a look again at capital needs throughout the district. We are talking, as Ms. Hines mentioned earlier, about turfing baseball, softball, and possibly multipurpose fields. So that could be a project paid for with reserve funds as opposed to tax levy or, you know, through the taxpayer. And then any remaining monies, we could apportion out to the remaining reserves as I've outlined here.
So that, when you add it up at $17 million?
Correct.
But once the books are closed, you know, we're not going to know for a little while, actually, what that?
Right. So in late September or so, maybe the first meeting of October, depending upon how the audit goes over the summer, you're going to come back and you're going to resolve to pass a very similar-looking resolution, but it's going to have the exact amounts that you are portioning to those reserves.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I forgot if we took the vote already, I apologize.
You have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Over to page five at the top is number six, personnel, teachers, consent agenda A through R. Can I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Izvolpe, seconded by Mrs. Pickowitz. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention? Motion carries. We will flip over to page 16.
If I can just interject, today we have some, this evening, we have some of our probationary teachers today joining us in the audience. If I could just ask you to just stand up for a second and just wave so we can have the board recognize you. Congratulations and welcome to the Satrum family.
On the top of page 16 is number seven, personnel, support staff, consent agenda A through M. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Scavo, seconded by Mr. Baumann. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Just a, sorry, just a quick shout-out. Tonight, we did recognize some of our retirees, and on this evening's agenda, we had Ellen Walsh, one of our NACOMAS-registered nurses, who has been with us for close to 26 years. So we want to thank her for all of her work with our little ones. We know that that's a critical position in our district, and she will be sorely missed.
Over towards the bottom of page 20 is number eight, personnel, administrator, consent agenda A through E. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Scavo, seconded by Mrs. Volpe. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Good. Sorry, I ran over you twice today. Towards the top of page 22 is number nine, contracts, consent agenda A through P. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Isurnia, seconded by Mrs. Pickowitz. I just have one question. We, we installed cameras both in the gyms and on the fields. Why do we still have a contract with Misty Mountain? Why are they filming games when we have cameras that are automatically filming games? I'm just wondering if this is something that we accidentally threw on, or we still have a contract with them for?
Yeah, I mean, I obviously have to ask Mr. Butell. I would assume a lot of the filming is for the coaches, to replay film, look at film, pass on to schools for the student athletes, things of that nature. But certainly, we could get another answer for you, if you like.
Okay. I don't know, maybe they go to away games. I mean, I know that the Huddle cameras that we bought automatically uploaded to Huddle, and you could share it with other coaches, and you can clip it for kids, and so I'm just curious as to why we still have an external company.
Yep. No, that was just brought forward by athletics, I would know.
Okay. Sorry, just a quick question. Towards, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Towards the bottom of page 26 is number 10, donations, consent agenda A through F. Motion by Mr. Scavo, seconded by Mr. Baumann. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. There are multiple donations on this page. One is from the Satrum North Touchdown Club for $6,500. One is from the Tamarack Elementary School PTA, in the amount of almost $5,800. One is from the Linwood Avenue Elementary School PTA, in the amount of $4,500. The NACOMAS Elementary PTA for $3,100. The Waverly Avenue Elementary PTA for $2,500. Excuse me, I have to flip the page. And the Grundy Avenue Elementary PTA for $7,171. Thank you very much to all of those groups. Number 11 is a budget transfer of $667,204. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Scavo, seconded by Mr. Baumann. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Number 12 is the Committee on Special Education, consent agenda A through B. Can I please have a motion? Motion by Mr. Baumann, seconded by Mr. Isurnia. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have any monthly reports?
Thank you. Tonight, we met for our last diversity committee meeting. It was really a nice celebration of the work that we got to start this year with our inclusion walkthroughs. Our first one was at Sammocet here in our Board of Education area and District Office. And again, these are so that, we wanted to really address first the physical spaces of our school, starting with the secondary, so that as students, families, visitors come either here to District Office or our secondary schools, they see an inviting environment that's inclusive of all the different types of students that we have. So we did do a walkthrough upstairs, almost over by Personnel and the rest of our district offices, so that our committee could see some of the work in terms of our student pictures that we put up, painting, et cetera. And we talked about next steps and goals for next year. Once we have those goals defined, we will bring them forth to the board, probably in our fall presentation, and we can also share with you some of the highlights from our inclusion walkthroughs. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Anyone else? Number 14, the first one is letter A, public comment for non-agenda items. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Mrs. Barone, please. I'm sorry that it took so long. Thank you for sticking around. Push that button. It's right on the base of it, yep.
Hello? Okay. I want to say thank you to Dr. Pelletieri for mentioning the incident.
Did you mean to interrupt me today?
Yes, I did.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Yeah. I got a lot of emails.
Yeah. I apologize. I got a phone call back from Salvia and Proctor. They put me on speaker, and we had a little.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. But please, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Don't hold those 10 seconds.
Thank you. Security was just the subject that I wanted to talk about, even though you obviously did address the situation, and certain things on social media. There's admins on different Facebook pages that seem to think they hold all the power over certain opinions and whatever. But a sensible debate is one thing, but bickering back and forth is another. The incident that happened at the high school was shared by several individuals. I listened to their opinions, but I only care and speak facts. Some people chose to say, well, I heard this, but in the next comment can say allegedly. Regardless of the ignorance, fear, or high horses that some people think that they are on, none of that really matters. Security is what. Security is what matters, and our kids is what matters. An elderly or retired anything that can get injured by a teenager should not be in charge. We need muscles, we need strength, we need adults whose eyes and ears work very well, because our kids are afraid to speak up. And some parents do not have Facebook or have access to see photos or videos or shared, even if they are a rumor necessarily. But this definitely needs to be spoken to the children about also. They should not fear speaking up, and hopefully, this will be investigated fully, because there was also another school that supposedly got into the school. And that school was mentioned from several different mouths that it was St. Anthony's. And supposedly, it's a yearly thing that's now happening, that every last day of the school, this one particular school goes to the high school and starts. Somebody let them in. There was also talks about sex in the halls, stun guns. We just want you to protect our children, and I just, I do appreciate you taking the time to address the situation. One of my parent friends, her child said that she saw blood in the hallway. So this is a high school student, this isn't an elementary student, you know. She walked into the building and actually took her kids from the high school. Nobody checked her ID, nobody signed her in or out. Another child was playing pickleball outside the whole day. Nobody saw that, nobody mentioned that, nobody addressed that. He was just outside playing this all day. And another child couldn't get to her class because of the different altercations. So obviously, you know, kids that are not even involved, you have parents on Facebook talking about, oh, it's the parents' fault, or, you know, they're raising animals. There's also these innocent bystander children that are just trying to walk to their class, and they're not able to get into their class. Like, that should not be an issue.
I'm sorry, those are your three minutes.
So security should really be stepped up where our kids are safe and can get to class and not risk being injured. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chrissy Hogan? Is it green?
Now it is.
Okay.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm using this opportunity to give gratitude and acknowledgement to an amazing young woman who was employed as a guidance counselor at Satrum North. Stacy Crass has been with Satrum for the last four years and has played a significant role in the mental health and overall well-being of my niece, and I'm going to apologize if I get emotional. She's a current senior at North, whom I've been raising along with her two brothers since the start of her freshman year. I currently have five children in four buildings across this district, and at one point had six children in five different buildings. From day one, completely unprompted, Ms. Crass reached out to me to introduce herself, offer both children and I any support and/or assistance she could provide to my family. She had clearly taken note of the significant life change for these students, who she had obviously had already become invested in without even knowing them personally. I'd always been under the impression that a guidance counselor on a high school level was primarily responsible for making schedules, and the emotional well-being of students was more of a school social worker and/or psychologist's responsibility, but not if you were blessed with Ms. Crass as your child's guidance counselor. Over the last four school years, Ms. Crass has met with my niece and my nephew when he was still in attendance regularly to discuss their schedules, their plans for the future. She had even given me a personal tutorial on how to navigate the Navion site when the time came to begin researching colleges, which I'm sure many parents of seniors know how difficult that can be. More importantly, she would meet with them just to ask how they are, how they're feeling, how they were adjusting to their new home and living circumstances. She has also regularly reached out to me to see how I was adjusting, and if there was anything at all she could do to help me, as I was drowning in this new mom-of-six life. I recall at one point Dr. Pelletieri talking about how he doesn't want just good here at Satrum. He wants great. Ms. Crass is great, and this leads me to why I'm here. I happened to attend a BOE meeting last month, and while flipping through the agenda, noticed Ms. Crass was on the permanent leave section with her last day of employment ending late June. I was in shock and certainly disappointed, but truthfully assumed that she had accepted a higher-paying position in another district. I reached out to her to thank her for all that she has done for my niece, my nephew and I, and when I explained why I reached out and asked her which lucky school had hit the Lotto, I was met with just a heartbreaking silence. She was very hesitant to share anything with me other than her gratitude for my kind sentiments, and to let me know that she was still searching for a new place to call home, which was very frightening to her, since she is also a Satrum resident and Satrum alumni. Upon my own research, I have since learned and confirmed that with no disciplinary record, no written, no write-ups, and frankly, no good reason, Satrum has let this incredibly great, completely priceless, highly educated, and one of the most compassionate human beings go. When given the option to be terminated or resign, any teacher or support staff can tell you that there is truthfully no option, because termination on a resume would guarantee you unemployment. Ms. Crass has played a tremendous role in the literal saving of my niece's life. In our worst moments, even when I fought her and every other person in administration in that building, when I felt I knew what was best for my niece, she continued to follow and remain loyal to every single policy in place and every guideline, the very same district that is now disposing of her. Our children cannot afford to lose people like Ms. Crass, not yesterday, not today, not ever. She is exactly what our current and future Satrum students and families need, and I have no doubt that whatever path she takes, she will continue to save and touch lives.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
And I understand that you may not be able to comment on details regarding individual staff members, but I am formally on the record requesting that the board and administration put a hold on your vote regarding her resignation, and please consider meeting with her and consider the impact that she has made, not only on my family, but many others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chrissy. Ashlyn Hogan?
Is it on?
There's a little green, is it a little green light on?
Yeah.
Yep. I can't see it from here.
Good evening. My name is Ashlyn Hogan, and tonight, I will be reading a letter on behalf of a mother who could not be here tonight, but wanted to share the positive impact that Satrum North Guidance Counselor Stacy Crass has had on her family. Although she prefer her name is kept private during this reading, I would like to hand you this when I am done, so you may see her name and contact her if you choose. Oh, sorry. I cannot be here tonight, but I wanted to speak about Ms. Crass. My daughter had a difficult time in high school, and Ms. Crass was the first one to be there for her. She took the time out to check in with her each and every day, and when she could not see her in person, always sent her a message to make sure she was okay. During remote learning at some of the darkest and most trying times of my daughter's life, Ms. Crass never gave up. She worked tirelessly as an advocate in the school building to make sure that she was able to connect with Mr. Chiamonte as a peer educator to give her something to engage her in. Ms. Crass was also instrumental in my daughter's reentry to school when in-person learning became available for our at-risk students. In some ways, Ms. Crass was my daughter's guardian angel at North, as she gave her purpose and the strength to face each challenge at school with gentle guidance and unwavering support. It is disheartening to know that Ms. Crass will not return next year and be that support for some other student who needs her compassion and understanding. She will be sorely missed by my family and, I'm sure, numerous others. Thank you for listening, and eternally grateful, ma.
Ashlyn, thank you very much. You can hand that right to Mrs. Florial, please. Jamison Martin?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jamison Martin, and I'm a graduating senior from Satrum North. I'm here today to speak on the devastating news I've recently heard about my guidance counselor, Ms. Stacy Crass. I recently heard that Satrum is letting her go after all her years of dedication put into not only her job, but her students at Satrum North. Ms. Crass has personally not only changed my life, but saved it too. Due to my difficult upbringing, I became extremely depressed. Over the years, made me turn to self-harm as a way to cope. November of 2021, my aunt found me physically ill after one of my attempts to cope. I was then taken to the hospital, where I was scared and felt alone. One day, my aunt came to me, and she had told me that she received a phone call from someone, and that someone was Ms. Crass. She called because out of the hundreds of students that she had, she had realized one had not been in school for a while. Once my aunt told me that she had reached out because she was worried something... She was worried something in me changed. It made me realize how many people actually care for me. Within the next few days, my awaited arrival to school was here. Ms. Crass wanted me to visit her in her office as soon as I entered the building to check in on me, because she missed me and was worried. She asked me how I was feeling and made me feel comfortable in a very uncomfortable time in my life. I did express some doubts within myself. She not only followed Satrum guidelines, but also sent me home with some information on places and references, and continued to follow up with my aunt. Ms. Crass has always been there for me and many of their students as well. She spent time over time with me, helping me with college, from being a freshman in high school, eating lunch in her office every day because I was scared, to now graduating in a few short days. Ms. Crass has single-handedly made me into the person I am today. She did more than make my schedule and sign papers. She saved me and inspired me to do better. I can say, I've seen multiple students from Satrum go into her office in times of need and come out smiling. I know multiple underclassmen that have been touched by having Ms. Crass as their guidance counselor. I just want to know how this change can be right to anyone. Thirteen years of attending Satrum K through 12, I've never encountered someone like Ms. Crass. All I ask is that you all really rethink the decision that you're making, because if it is really for the kids, it shouldn't be in question. Our community is filled with people that wants what's best for the kids, so why even question taking away someone so important and making these kids walk through the halls feeling alone again? And why try to replace someone who's irreplaceable? I've grown a lot since then, and for the first time, I now know what I want to do with my future, and it's to be someone like Ms. Crass and help kids and make them feel like there's something worth fighting for. Thank you for your time.
Jamison, thank you so much for coming and having the courage to share your story. Thank you. Chris Buckley?
Good evening, everyone. I know that security is at the front of everyone's minds. The rumors about yesterday's fight were very scary to me as an elementary school parent. I just want to thank you, Dr. Pelletieri. I know that you reached out to me by email. I saw that, and also thanks for your comments tonight. It does make me feel a little bit better. So I originally wanted to come up here and talk about armed security in our schools, but as I started doing research to what qualifications our security guards have to attain, I found out that it's only a New York State security license. This course is not tailored to schools or dealing with children. While I still think that having armed guards is a good idea, I think there is a better solution we can work on getting implemented, and that is a school security guard course or license. I'm not going to take any credit for this idea, because it was presented to me by a current board member, Jim Kiernan. Prior to his involvement with the board, he was in charge of security at William Floyd. His idea is to take the current license and encompass a class specific to the laws and rules in schools and dealing with children. Why don't we push back as a community and a board and have New York State change that license for schools? Seville has already sent out a formal request, which I will forward to you all, and I think Satrum should as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And we're going to talk about that right now. We have it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is letter B is board discussion items. The first one is the committee application. Michael?
Yes, I brought this up for a couple of reasons. I know we want to try to get the committees up and running as quickly as possible when the new year comes about, so I thought we should... But I really wanted to, now I wanted to really look at the application and update it. I mean, it's still asking for a fax number, it should be asking for a cellphone number, if we should place where, you know, attach your resume, some numerics for hierarchies of a desire, what committees to be on. So if the board was okay with it, I was going to take this and make a draft of what I think it should look like, and we could circulate it before the new year, as we, Allison, can let all the current committee members know that after July 1st, we'll reach out to them and reach out to them with a new application. So that was the extent of the discussion I wanted to have right now.
Goodbye, buddy.
Bye.
So, you want to talk, you want to say that one more time?
Yeah, I just, I was going to take, anybody minds, I'll take a cut and a draft of what I think it should look like, and we could circulate it, and then decide on if it's good, not good, or we want to change it. Is that okay with everybody?
Keep it on the agenda for the next, for...
Yeah, put it on the, put it on the next meeting, yeah. I'll get it out for that.
Are we still keeping the limits on the new committees? And, like, I know it was nine, right?
I guess that would be another discussion item, right, for next?
Yeah, because that would be helpful on the application.
Right, right. So, I guess we'll put board committees on for a future, for a future agenda, right, at the next meeting, okay?
We can put it on for the, for July 6th.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Who wants to be the first to talk about the resolution from Seville? Sure.
I think it's important to take a stand to show the community that unbeknownst to me as well, we don't have school-specific licensing for our security guards, and, you know, whether, you know... I think taking a stand together and joining with other school districts to show how important this is, is important for Satrum to take on. So I have not much more to say about it, because it's really at the forefront of everything we've been discussing for the past month and a half, at least while I've been here.
Yeah, I, I, sorry. I read this resolution, and it's very, very good. You know, it is something that is, you know, really is a top priority right now. You know, we've gone through this, you know, a few years ago, when school shootings were a top priority, and then all of a sudden, things changed, and there wasn't one for a while, and we're back to this. And I'm just, quick, quick, quick question. Where it says, "Whereas current training and licensure for security guards within the state required, no such credentials as security guards employed by school districts." We're asking for the state to create a program, a licensing for, specific to schools, is that we're asking?
We really, I mean, and I'm going to put a motion, that Jim Kiernan is highly involved in this, and he can answer these questions in more detail. I've had discussions with him, but to have me explain this resolution, I didn't work on it. I'm just bringing it to the board for discussion, so I would make a motion to have Mr. Kiernan come in and give a presentation.
Just, just quickly, number one, we're not going to take motions from the floor, but number two, Jim should still be sitting here. He could be, but just so you know, he could be part of this discussion right now. He's choosing not to be here. He could been, he's missed the last, I can't tell you how many meetings, and I...
But it doesn't change the topic of what we're, of what we're discussing. So if Jim will not be here and does not want to be here, can we find another professional that could explain this, maybe reach out to Seville?
Sure, I could, John Verdon, who the president is, I'm friendly with, and we can certainly bring John in if we need so.
Yeah, I have discussions with people who are involved in this in Seville as well. So it doesn't need to be Jim. I just figured he's a resource here, but again, you're right, he's not, he's not here.
My only question with this is that, I think it's well-written, you know, I think the state would look at this and say, yeah, and say, all right, now we're going to create a new licensing, but what I think we should do to this is we should add another bullet point to it that says where the state funds it, because we're asking, we're asking for just another unfunded mandate, and the state has no problem giving us unfunded mandates.
Didn't create this?
No, 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 I know, you didn't, yeah.
I completely think that's, that's a great point.
Yeah, I think they should fund it, and there's a lot of talk right now with, you know, creating funding, okay? If you watch any of the debates with the governors...
Right.
About creating funding about, around school security. So I think if we're going to ask for this, we should ask them to fund... So I think if we're going to ask for this, we should ask them to fund it. That's all. But I would be okay with this.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I guess, my experience with the security guards, we have them by us, we do hire them. Remember, security guards are licensed through the Department of State. The curriculum is, anybody providing a curriculum is a private provider. It's not a state provider. They, they go to a private provider of the educational instruction. They go to an eight-hour refresher course, but it's not something that we pay for unless we pay for, for our own security guards for their refresher. But to get a license, it's provided by a private, private entity. So, and I think the division of criminal justice actually approves the curriculums that these private entities use to teach these courses. The, what I envision from this, from this resolution is what they're talking about is right now, there's only two levels of security guard. There's unarmed security guard and there's armed security guard. The armed security guard goes through additional training as a requirement to have that license. I'm gathering what they're talking about now is also developing another endorsement for a security guard license that would be specific to school security involvement, school security threat, something that, I don't know, if it's an eight-hour course, a 16-hour course. I haven't actually, Jim only mentioned that to me free, just in passing that he was talking or working on this. But, so it wouldn't be something the state would fund. It would be something we would put into our requirements when we hire a security guard and would be a requirement as they renew, they would have to include this endorsement now. So it wouldn't be something that the state would be mandating, you know, it wouldn't be an unfunded mandate to us. It would be another educational requirement, just no different than having a bachelor's degree or a teaching certification. All right, they would have to have this endorsement now for us in order to hire them into the school environment. So I, and believe me, I'm all for, actually, the more I think about it, the more I'm for it, that this is something that should be developed as, I think, the school environment, obviously, we all know is uniquely, uniquely situated, that specialized training by the security staff is probably warranted. I, I just don't know if a resolution to the Department of Ed means anything because it's, the Commissioner Ed is just going to go, well, I gotta, I gotta go to the Department of State and the Department of State's got to go to. So, you know, you really want to get some traction. We could pass a resolution that says we're all in favor of a, a creation of a, uh, school security endorsement. But I also think that we should get together with the other school districts and send a letter to Hochul, send a letter to Smith, send a letter to Week, send a letter to Commissioner Ed, send a letter to the Commissioner of the, the Secretary of State and say, this is, this is something that's worthy of the state's consideration. You know, put that out there and get the president, the superintendent of Saichem, president, superintendent of Seville, get everybody sign onto a letter that says, we are in favor of the creation of this specialized training to help us protect our kids in our schools. I think that gets a lot of traction.
And put a line in the budget for each and every year, for each and every district. So it's not a, a choice of what's the opportunity cost of this decision? What do I have to give up to add more here? So they're going to start to, I think we need to start to have the state support us more in terms of this past year, they put learning loss lines in budgets, they gave us grants, things like that. I think it's time, I'd love to work with them on getting us grants around security as well.
Do we pay their renewals? Their eight-hour refreshers? Do we pay for that?
Oh, connect, okay, so? What I mean is, is to support the hiring of guards and the like and security improvements in schools.
Okay, that's, that's above and beyond what we're talking about, but I understand what you're saying now. Okay, so?
I know, I have a list. I'm just, we're not there yet. Sarah and then Vinnie.
I think it also would be helpful if we had our head of security, like, let us know what he needs and how we could support him and then his team. Because I know we always have questions and it'd be helpful if he was here to, like, answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Vinnie?
John, do you know if we actually, because we talked about this, right? We had some email conversation about looking at requirements, staff, you know, staff sort of responsibilities. Are we moving forward with that as part of the threat assessment? That was one question. I was going to?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I forwarded the board that revised proposal, which included that full assessment of not only the building's security, but an analysis of actual, the staff, their training, and their protocols. So it would be up to the board to decide if that was the direction you wanted to move forward with on July 1st.
So we need to make a decision about that. But then Mike, just to address something, I've got, because I've also had conversations with Mr. Kiernan as well, and with regards to the resolution, I don't want to speak for Assemblyman Smith, but I have an email here from him through Jim that talks about the fact that the resolution should help push this forward. So he's going to be chairing some committees coming up shortly and perhaps our legislative committee can get with Assemblyman Smith and Senator White as well.
I have females with Doug. The same, the same.
Yeah, the feedback was the resolutions will help. So I think the more districts that can get behind this, we push it. And then I'm also on, you know, in favor of letters as well, but, okay?
Can I also say that the community might not be aware, because I was not aware and I'm pretty involved, that you can go from working retail loss prevention, it's the same license, and you can come here and work with our kids with no kind of de-escalation training? Like, we, school shootings obviously brought this to the forefront, but just in keeping our, our kids safe, having a school fight and someone only knows how to deal with loss prevention is, is, it blows my mind. So to not have school-specific, not Saichem-specific, but state-school-specific training, it, it, I, I assume they did. I assume they did. And, and now we can be the instrument that pushes that forward, especially considering we're in a, a crisis with school shootings. We can now call attention to this and fix a problem, I think.
Just, just quickly, and then Sarah, just only because I see Mike, Mike's head just popped out in the back. This is not an indignation on any of our security guards and our staff. This is just building professional development and how we can be better as not only our school but across New York State. We, we have, you know, excellent security and we should have more of it. But, you know, you're right, there, there needs to be more training.
100% agree.
We can push this and I, and I'm all for this. I just don't want this to be like any other letter that we write, that it's anything, and I know everyone says keep politics out of the boardroom, but everything goes back to, you know, lobbying to our state officials, but, you know, this is going to take forever. This is going to take a while. We, what can we? You know, the threat assessment, but we need to do more in the immediate. We need to look into the immediate and say, yes, these are the people we have right now. They've done nothing wrong. They've done the training that they were supposed to, to be in the building. How can we support them and what do they need as we move forward? And I'm, I'm all for this, but there are, there, there needs to be steps that we take in the immediate before this takes place and I'll be great by, by probably that time.
I just wanted to mention, we don't just throw our security guards like to the wall, like, they are trained, like, we do give them CPI training, which is de-escalation and stuff.
No, it's not required.
So they do have some sort of training. But Saichem does give them some sort of training.
Right, right. No, this is not a reflection on Saichem or our security at all.
Anyone else? So maybe we can, we can?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, but like is being said, that de-escalation training we're talking about is part of a Saichem training that we provide our guards.
Did that need to be on the agenda for approval or we can do it without it being on the agenda?
No, it does not need to be on the agenda. It's, it's through BOSI's, so it's a, it's just basically a contract that the superintendent's going to enter into as part of our?
What I'm saying is, do you need our approval tonight?
You're going to need to let me know whether we're moving forward with the initial proposal or the second proposal.
The second one is the additional money?
The enhanced, yes.
Does anyone have any issues with the, the second proposal? Okay. So, go. Yeah. Yes. There are some changes that maybe we want to craft and we can get with, with Chris and, and then we can approve this ASAP. Okay?
Are you going to reach out to Seville?
Yeah. Anyone else? Anything for future agenda items? Yeah, please.
The, the committee discussion, but we already added that, so?
Yeah.
The only thing I want to add is that last year, back on May 5th, we made a motion as a board and we approved a reduction in class size. And it went from, I don't know, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, I think it was 27. And I know this year we ran into a problem with, with space and we ran into a problem with, you know, the, the amount of UPK classes in one particular school that was over-registered already. I just want to get ahead of this because, you know, the directive that we gave to, to administration was to, let's stay under that. I mean, you know, in a, in a fifth grade class, 27 kids is still a pretty large class. And, and if we can get updates and we can get ahead of this, maybe some type of presentation as to where we're at, moving forward so that we could, you know, if we promised the community we were going to give them, you know, one less kid, you know, as a target number from the board, you know, I want to be able to say, you know, go out there and say, look, we did do that, you know? And if we're not, you know, if search situations come up where kids move in and now we're over, that we have a process in place to, to provide that teacher with support. So that teacher is one or two over in her class, his class, that we're providing some type of aid, net glass for assistance. And so I just want to get ahead of it. So next year, we're not starting off in September where we have five or six or seven sections over, you know, and, and I want to start those conversations now.
Yep.
Can you repeat the, the numbers again? Write them down.